Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the first meeting of the new year. And the first meeting after the heartbreaking gut-wrenching loss on Sunday by the Buffalo Bills to the Kansas City Chiefs. I'm John Cummell, and once again, pleased to chair the meeting of the esteemed board of NIPA and Canals, and I'm happy, as always, to be joined by the team that you see on your screen, where obviously remain virtual out of an abundance of caution and look forward to hopefully being back together in person, or substantially so, at our next meeting in March. In addition to my fellow board members, welcome Justin and NIPA staff who are scattered around the boardroom as well as across the screen. Remind everyone, the meeting was duly noticed as required by open meetings law, and I'm therefore pleased to call it to order. We've all been presented with the agenda. Hopefully, everyone's had a chance to review the materials. Unless anyone has any recommendations for amendments to that agenda, I'd ask for a motion to adopt what's in front of us.
Second.
All right, I was just gonna say there was a second, maybe a third in there. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, and the agenda has been adopted. Bit of a flip-flop to start the year. We're going to end our meeting in exact session. We typically start, but we're gonna do that on the back end of the meeting. So we will move right into our regular flow. It starts with ensuring that nobody has any late-breaking conflicts or changes to the contractors' list that otherwise have hopefully been reviewed and any responses provided to Karen. Obviously, January, it's a time to look back and reflect on what was another exciting, challenging, and in our case, very productive and rewarding year in 2021. That said, also a time to look ahead as to the opportunities as well as the challenges that we foresee in '22 and beyond. So ask Justin and Joe and Sarah and Adam to present to us today within that context, combination of look back and look forward, and we can have a bit of a discussion with and among the four of them and their teams as needed before we move into our finance and cyber committee report. So, Justin, you can kick us off and get us started, please.
Very good. Chairman, trustees, NIPA colleagues, and members of the public, good morning. First, I'd like to thank you for the support over the last three months as I've taken the baton from Gil and commenced the role of interim president and CEO. And I'm confident that we're well-positioned to execute on the mission of the power authority and also advance Governor Hochul's energy policies and, more broadly, the clean energy transition here in New York State. Our transition from Gil's leadership is going really smoothly. I've been working very closely with my executive management team, our senior leadership here at NIPA, and I have to say, we haven't missed a beat. I'm also working closely with my colleagues in state government and the governor's office, and we're locked in on our Vision 2030 strategy. And I'm confident that we're here to, we're going to be in a position to drive that forward. And what you can expect from NIPA management is a continued commitment from us to execute on that strategy. So, you've always said, Mr. Chairman, we start with strategy here and risk and operations in that order. And so, looking at strategy, I want to pull up our Vision 2030 scorecard. And as you can see, first, in terms of the progress made in 2021, we're trending green. We like to see, we like to see that, and we're tracking very well in terms of the measurements we've imposed on ourselves in tracking our journey going forward. So what I want to do here, as you flag, Chairman, is maybe a little bit of a look back, a look at where we are, and then a look forward in what we can expect in 2022 and what we're excited about here at NIPA in terms of what we have ahead of us in the coming year. So first, in terms of, in terms of our strategic plan, as you know, the plan has five strategic priorities, and we've delivered on our 2021 goals in these areas. When we launched the 2030 strategy at the start of last year, we laid out an ambitious vision and mission along with specific goals and targets to allow us to measure our progress in all five priorities. And in 2021, we collectively put NIPA on track to achieve these ambitious goals. What you see before you on the slide are the highlights of the 2021 successes. And as you probably can imagine, this work is highly cross-functional here at NIPA, so that on an item like, for instance, our major maintenance or our LEM programs, we're working not only on that to preserve the value of hydropower, but at the same time, we're working in our regulatory group with regulatory bodies to try to make sure that the value of NIPA hydropower is preserved in energy markets. So it's a collaboration across the organization. And with, and progress within each priority directly furthers our mission to best serve the people of New York. So how do we do that? We do it by supporting current and future clean energy resources, transporting clean energy resources from where they are, where they're produced, to where they're used, and helping our customers navigate the changes in the energy industry. And at the same time, reinvigorating canal communities with new economic and recreational opportunities. And just as we have the five strategic priorities, we also have five foundational pillars in this strategy, as we all know. And these pillars reflect our efforts to, among other things, make enhancements to existing digital, enabling productivity as well as cybersecurity. We're also leading by example with our ESG and DEI plans, and we're preparing for the future through both our risk and resilience programs and our career pathing work within our resource alignment initiative. Let me also mention a few project-specific NIPA successes in '21 that demonstrate the broad reach of our programs. In 2021, we installed rooftop solar arrays at 47 public schools and multiple wastewater treatment facilities. These projects will be in the five boroughs of New York City, and they'll, as well as in Ulster, Delaware, and Westchester County with up to 22 megawatts of solar power. This is enough power to power 5,600 New York City residences and reduce nearly 7,000 metric tons of CO2 equivalent each year, which equates to removing more than 1,500 cars from city streets. Several of these facilities are expected to include energy storage systems that will store energy for use during periods of peak electricity demand. We also completed lighting upgrades at Niagara Falls Housing Authority, where we installed nearly 1,000 new energy-efficient fixtures at four Niagara Falls Housing Authority facilities. And we're proud to say that this was financed by our environmental justice program. We also opened the Utica Energy Zone, which provides an immersive, interactive, state-of-the-art museum experience focused on the past, present, and future of energy in New York State. It's a 1,500-square-foot facility, and it's designed for visitors of all ages. And the nice thing about it is, we hadn't had a visitor center in central New York, and now we do. Next, we awarded 10 student scholarships to college-bound New Yorkers to help increase diversity in the electric utility sector. This was the first year of a five-year Future Energy Leader Scholarship here at NIPA. NIPA is also a business partner in the Pathways and Technology Early College High Schools PTEC program that will offer paid internships this summer to 15 students interested in science, technology, engineering, and math. Next, we achieved the first major milestone in our next-gen Niagara upgrade project. Next-gen Niagara, as you know, is a $1.1 billion, 15-year modernization and digitization program to significantly extend the operating life of the Niagara Power Project. This initiative is critical to achieving New York State's aggressive clean energy goal to transition 100% carbon-free electricity by 2040. Next, we celebrated the lighting of the Fairport Bridge on the canal system. This newly-installed lighting, through the state's Reimagine the Canals Initiative, is the first of several planned lighting projects to illuminate historic pieces of New York Canalway infrastructure. New LED lighting features illuminated further beautify the Fairport Lift Bridge over the canal in Monroe County, as well as two Oneida Lake lighthouses, one in Bruerton in Oswego County and the other at Barona Beach in Oneida County. In the area of transmission development, we had several successes. In our SmartPath project, we started the fourth of six phases of construction on rebuilding the existing Moses Adirondack Lines. We expect to be in service in 2023. Also, our SmartPath Connect, and this is our first priority transmission project under our Accelerated Renewable Authority that was granted by the legislature. Our Article VII there has been deemed complete, and we're working through that process with the hope of the Article VII being awarded, certificate being awarded in 2022. This, as you know, is a joint project with National Grid, and it's expected to be in service at the end of 2025. Additionally, as we know, Clean Path New York was selected by NYSERDA as a winner of the Tier Force Solicitation along with another project. Very excited. This is a partnership between Energy Re and Venergy and NIPA. It's a 175-mile HVDC underground line along our Marcy South right-of-way. And NYSERDA submitted the contracts just recently for PSC review, and the public comment period is now underway. And finally, our Propel Energy New York, our new acronym for another project that we're very proud of. This is the CENE, a Public Policy Transmission Need Project, and we're in a NISO competitive solicitation there for an award of that project under the Work Order 1000 process. And we've submitted seven proposals with our partner, New York Transho, and currently in the NISO viability and sufficiency assessment process and expect a final determination sometime in Q3 or Q4 of this year. In the area of NIPA financial performance, we exceeded financial plan targets of 40 million net income for the year in 2021 and surpassed all, surpassed all financial metrics necessary to maintain our AA rating, which is so important to us. A couple highlights, last year, we merged the Canal OPEB liability into NIPA's OPEB trust and converted NIPA Medicare eligible employees into Medicare Advantage insurance, resulting in savings and an improved balance sheet. We also established a new green, green transition revenue bond, which will be a separate credit from NIPA that will increase overall borrowing capacity and help these projects get funded. And we issued the first NIPA Sustainability Plan and Sustainability Report coming out of our financial group. And looking at our capital plan, and the capital plan overall, capital spending for the year was 916 million. And of that, of the 1.1 billion budgeted, or 84%, this is a 237 million increase, or 35% increase over the 2020 spend, where we spent 78%. So slight and poor performance improvement in connection with the amount of our capital spend. And looking forward to the 2022 capital budget, which is the most ambitious in NIPA history, close to $1.2 billion, and that's a growth of 90 million, or 8% over 2021. The largest projects that we're all familiar with, but in 2022, we'll have SmartPath Connect, 158 million, SmartPath, 122 million, and the Central East Energy Connect, or our AC proceeding, at 92 million. Now, as we look at where we were last year and where we are today and where we're headed, it's important to note that we're completely aligned with Governor Hochul's energy policies and initiatives. And in that regard, in a recent State of the State delivered just weeks ago, NIPA was mentioned seven times. First, NIPA will work with NYSERDA and ESD to compete for available federal funding to make New York a green energy hub. This will build on our Brentwood Green Energy Demonstration Project out of our Brentwood Peaker Plant that I know you're familiar with, as well as the Plug Power Hydropower Award that we made to Plug Power for a facility in upstate New York to develop green hydrogen. We're also asked to harden infrastructure to improve reliability for emergency services throughout the state with a set of specific projects listed, which we will undertake in 2022. NIPA will undertake the following work at police and fire departments in 2022 pursuant to the Governor's State of the State. We'll commence resiliency installations, including solar storage, backup generators, and energy efficiency measures at a minimum of three sites. We'll complete LED lighting retrofits in 100 precincts. We'll identify five model first responder facilities and conduct resiliency studies to determine best practices and technical requirements to be used as a blueprint for other facilities across the state. And beyond 2022, NIPA will focus on police precincts and 450 fire stations in New York State, providing solar, storage, and energy efficiency improvements. As we previously talked about, 2021 and our Vision 2030 successes, looking at the Vision 22 scorecard or plan for the strategy in 2022, we're going to do a number of things. In the preserve the hydropower area, we're going to publish a public report on the future of hydropower based on a NISO planning study. We're going to develop and publish a long-term CENE decarbonization plan under our decarbonization priority. We're going to, in the transmission area, construct and test major projects and develop new proposals for identified New York State transmission needs. In the customer area, we're going to expand customer segments served and begin voluntary rec sales. And finally, reimagine the canals effort. We're very excited about the On the Canals program and what that will do in 2022. In the area of research and development here at NIPA, we're doing very exciting work. One, our cadenza battery project will become operational in 2022. This is a 50-kilowatt battery storage system onsite at the White Plains Office, which will be used to reduce peak demand. It has a very unique fire suppression technology that not only NIPA, but others are interested in. And the project is now installed here at White Plains, and will go operational in Q1 2022 for a one-year demonstration. Another R&amp;D project we're excited about is the 2022 substation robot application. This subject, the objective of this project would be to inspect unmanned substation assets such as transformers and breakers online 24/7 to prevent unscheduled outages and unexpected failures. And testing will resume in this project in May of 2022. In the risk and resilience area, we recognize how critical this area is to us here at NIPA, and we're building on the great work that's been done to date. One interesting project in risk and resilience is our climate adaptation study, which will be complete in 2022. Here, we're applying downscaled climate impact modeling and infrastructure risk and resilience analysis to our current infrastructure. And the deliverables will inform our adaptation and risk mitigation strategies as well as our capital expenditure planning. In the financial management area, we have our goals in 2022 as well. First, on the credit side, we're going to execute a green transmission revenue bond by the end of Q1 in 2022. And we're going to execute an assignment of our energy efficiency loan portfolio and set up a revolving loan program. On the financial reporting side, in 2022, we'll complete the preparation for our integrated reporting by year-end, so that we're able to go live in 2023. And on the, on the risk and resilience side, we're going to raise our risk maturity level to a score of three. We're going to strengthen our internal controls. And with legislative and regulatory approval, we're going to launch Captive Insurance Company and stand that up by year-end. And that's a good segue into my last topic, which is Governor Hochul's recently announced executive budget. As you know, we've had success over the last few years in expanding our authority through the state budget process. And this year, we've been fortunate as well. We've had legislation proposed by the governor this year that will enable NIPA to further, better deliver, and better deliver services to our customers and also protect NIPA. And in that regard, the Captive Insurance Bill, which was included in last year's budget, will be, will be in the budget again. This captive bill will allow us the same ability that the MTA has currently to access new insurance programs through insurance products and participate in federal insurance programs through the Captive, which would be a corporate subsidiary of NIPA. There are two other, three other items in the budget. Part DDD of the executive budget is an amendment to our 1,005-17 Energy Efficiency Authority. And that will allow us to serve any general hospital in New York State, so expanding a customer base for our energy services program. Part FFF of the governor's executive budget, in connection with our $10-million pilot, will authorize NIPA to utilize unused broadband capacity to support the governor's broadband initiative around the state. And we're working currently on developing the metrics around, around that pilot program. I mentioned the Captive that's in again, and then also, again, this year, and in the last few years, the $20-million item to the state treasury for energy, energy policies. So, we've got a lot in the, in the budget. We've got a lot in the State of the State. As you can see, we have a lot to do. The state is relying on us in many ways and has confidence in us, and we're well-positioned to deliver. So to wrap up here, we're on very solid footing. As we enter 2022, we continue to lead in so many ways, as we always have. We're in complete alignment with Governor Hochul and her goals, and we've seen, as we've seen with the State of the State and the budget, we're, we're in solid financial shape. We've got a talented and engaged workforce. Thank you.
Thanks, Justin.
Happy to take any questions.
Yeah, thank you for a comprehensive and very positive recap of all that was accomplished in '21. As the time passes, it's easy to forget, yeah, how well you and the team navigated the year and all that was accomplished. So kudos to everyone. The leadership team, the entire organization, and another outstanding year and tremendous accomplishments, and ensuring we're even better positioned to tackle the opportunities as well as the challenges of the next year. You know, as report cards tend to do, yours displayed, well displayed, the accomplishments and the outcomes. There's always that section at the back end of any report card or performance evaluation, areas for improvement, lessons learned, et cetera. As you sit in your elevated role, reflect a bit on what you think the organizational lessons of '21 were, and what do you, as a leadership team, carry into '22 to ensure we're effective and successful? And build on, you know, the strength of the foundation and track record that we have. What, what are a couple of key takeaways that you guys, you know, look at to ensure you keep front and center to ensure we remain strong and effective in what we do day in and day out, as well as keep an eye on the strategic ball?
Yeah, well, I think, you know, we talk a lot about resiliency of the organization, but the first thing that comes to mind is we have a very resilient workforce here, as was demonstrated in 2020 and 2021 as well, with the ups and downs. If you recall, we were, everybody, you know, was back to normal, if you will, and May and June of 2021, and planning vacations and weddings and so forth. And, and then come the fall, we were back in sort of protective mode, and then with the latest variant, challenged again. And so, what the big takeaway for me was, is I know you say this all the time, it's, it's team and talent, it's, it's retaining our workforce. I think we're gonna have to, going forward, be flexible with our workforce in some ways. I think that's gonna be the trend in the industry. And so, we need, really need to work hard to make, make sure that, that we can retain our talent. That's number one, attract new talent, but do it in a way that makes it possible for people to be somewhat flexible in the way that they perform their services here, because I think we're just gonna have to do that. So, that would be a big challenge for us in 2022, is figuring that all out, what that new normal looks like. I think on an operational side, financially and operationally, you know, we're really hitting it out of the park, and, you know, we have new transmission projects that are bringing in new sources of revenue. Our customer offerings are exciting. So I'm really positive about 2022, and, you know, just, just want to focus on that workforce element in particular.
Justin, a couple of questions that I have, and I commend the team too in navigating through this last year, when we thought we'd all be back in. One of the, when I was thinking about the question the chairman asked, I was thinking, you know, probably one of those was that the fact that we thought you'd be in office and then you weren't, you know. Well, you were briefly and then not, so. But again, I commend the team for all the, that you delivered on over the last year. And when I looked at the, what you prepared for us as you captured '21 and looked in '22, you know, '21, there was a lot of operational stuff that you accomplished. And so, the, the problem is, how do you continue that momentum? And then when I looked at the goals for '22, there was a lot of, you know, plans to put together, programs and studies. And so, other than the financial management piece, which has a little bit more meat on it, you know, what are your thoughts on, because ultimately, those plans and programs and studies are really good, but we're an operational machine, right? That's what we do well. And how do you continue to challenge your team to deliver up, to be ambitious? And, and, you know, to think outside the box operationally of what we can accomplish over the next year, after having done so well, and to navigate through '21?
Yeah, I thank you for the question. I think, you know, one of the great things about NIPA is our workforce is really excited about the work we do. We're, you know, we, we're a utility with a mission, and when you, when you go around the power authority, you talk to people that are truly excited about the work that, that we do here. But it's a fair point you raise, and I, I think one of the things, you know, you, sometimes you take for granted the projects that we have in the pipeline. You know, we've got so many big transmission projects and other generation projects underway that, you know, they're, they're on track and they're proceeding. And it's not like they don't need oversight, but, but those, those projects are gonna go to their, you know, in-service date. And, but we don't, I guess we don't mention all the work around that enough. So I guess, you know, just trying to keep people energized about the work we do and make sure that we're setting the right realistic goals for projects, both from a financial perspective and just in terms of, you know, operation completion dates and so forth. But, yeah, that, that is a totally separate area of focus that should get more emphasis.
Justin, Chairman of the Audit Committee, what assurances can you give the board and the public at large that we are not only looking outside, but we're also looking inside at our operations and processes so that we provide the best oversight possible for the various things we do?
Yeah, thank you. As you know, Judge, in my role as general counsel, I had some direct dotted-line oversight over internal audits, so very familiar with the, I think, the progression of that office, the progress that Angela Gonzalez is making as internal auditor. I know that the 2021 audit plan was completed on time. It's not, not so easy, given the fact that a lot of our workforce is not in the building here, but she completed that audit plan fully at 100%. And I know, you know, there's a lot, I think in that industry, people move around a lot in the internal audit space. And so, it's been a challenge over the years to keep good internal auditors in-house here. But I know that she's, she's effectively fully staffed in her, in her shop and, you know, is working well with management. We watch closely the way the management interacts with internal audit, of course, to make sure that when there's an audit finding and a mitigation plan, if you will, associated with that finding, that management is being sufficiently responsive to close those out. And we've made great progress in the way that we close out and the percentage of audits that are closed out in a timely way with management cooperation. So I think, I think we're in good shape there, Judge, I really do.
Thank you.
And my last half editorial, half question for you, Justin. For all the focus, appropriately so, on our own operations and transmission, what can only underscore the importance of leaning in, in a more significant way to the canals initiatives? I think we're clearly at a point now where we and canals are one. And the need and investment to stabilize canals and, you know, every respect is well in hand. So very excited about the opportunity that, you know, we have to really begin to bring that portion of our vision to life. You talked about the governor's budget. Always look forward to, hopefully, the opportunity. the governor's budget. Always look forward to hopefully the opportunity sooner than not for us to be able to leverage our investment with what I'm confident could be private sector investment to even further amplify the ramp up of the canals initiative. So feel free to add or comment, but I want to underscore that our, you know, five pillars, five priorities, maybe better said, canals is one we want to further step into and step up on as we progress over the course of 22 and beyond as well. And hopefully do that with the benefit of private sector investment sooner than not, in addition to our own significant continuing and incremental spend.
No, I agree with you. And I think, you know, we continue to get feedback that there's interest in the private sector among among people to donate money. There are so many other parks and historic facilities out there that have, you know, fundraising vehicles or trusts associated with them. But there's no, there's no question there is some appetite out there. And I think the way I look at this is that the more we can do projects like the Fairport Bridge lighting and people can see the work, the good work we're doing and reimagine, the more we're going to get of that. And we're still trying to figure out what that vehicle is for for, you know, trying to attract that private money. But I do think that and we've got a bunch of wins we're going to announce in 2022. But I think the more of those we do, the more that that's going to be successful, that that outreach.
Any other questions or thoughts for Justin? Again, kudos to you, the entire team and broader organization on a great 21 and for appreciate your continued leadership personally in the team EMC at large through transition and year end. And we're excited to see the continued climb. Know that you're embracing the opportunity to really lean in and elevate our play even further. So kudos and well done, great year, and we're excited to see what 22 brings.
Mr. Chairman, I have one last question for Justin before he leaves the podium, if you don't mind. Justin, can you just briefly, going forward, what your prognosis is on our diversity program that we initiated last year?
Yeah, well, you know, we 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 launched the 10-point program. There's still, there's a lot of work being done behind the scenes. It's it's all those initiatives are on track. Maybe what we ought to do is come back to you at the next meeting and give you an update on just where we are on each one of the items in the 10-point plan. But but a lot of great work being done. And I know it's being well received here. And I think we're leading. We were one of the first utilities really to to have a really concrete plan. And so we were a model for others. So we're very proud of it. And again, happy to come back to you on more granular detail about the progress we're making.
Good idea. Yeah, and I think in general, as we, that our scorecard evolves, you know, we we tend to how we distill, you know, our priorities and our pillars and, you know, rethink our, you know, scorecard around those priorities and pillars, including, you know, the DEI initiatives, Justin. We can talk further about how to best capture an ongoing and continual, you know, real-time assessment of the progress being made on all of those. So.
Sounds good. Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks again.
All right, building on all of that or drilling a little deeper and some of what Justin just recapped, Joe, Sarah, Adam will offer their thoughts and perspectives. So Joe, next up, and give us your view from the operations perspective, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Welcome trustees, members of the public and my NIPA colleagues. Despite it being late in the year and myself mourning the Bills loss of last weekend, I remain optimistic about them. I remain optimistic about the Power Authority, and I just want to wish everybody a happy new year. So thank you, everybody, for your attention here today. Justin just presented for you the corporate KPIs, and you can advance the slide, please, Carly. And I want to focus and drill down in really three key areas, as you pointed out, around operations. We're going to talk about health and safety. We're going to talk about drills and exercises, and then, of course, the major projects. So this slide represents kind of a look for accomplishments from 2021 and look forward on 2022. And I'll go over that. We're very proud to be green in our DART rate. I know we talk about it every meeting. It's very important because it so directly impacts our workforce to keep that number low. So we want to be below target in this particular measure. It just means that we don't do not have significant injuries. So we've been very fortunate that none of the DART instances that we have are even qualified as serious injuries. But they did require some days away or restricted work. In terms of collaboration on health and safety programs enterprise-wide, the focus area I'd like to touch on is really around our electrical safety program. That's not to say we did not have an electric safety program. Of course, we have, and we've developed that over 60 years through tribal knowledge and kind of a parochial way. But we've made great strides in 2021 employing all that together and providing, sharing best practices amongst each other to really make that a further enhancement, especially around new requirements in terms of arc flash safety and some of the other requirements in electrical safety that we didn't have a comprehensive view before. So that's very important to us, not only for the safety of our employees, but also keeping track of our contractors. As Justin pointed out, we have a significant capital budget now and a significant number of contractors supporting the work that we're trying to accomplish. And we hold them to the the highest expectations of safety as well. We've been briefing the board regularly throughout the year, but just to reemphasize that our COVID incident command structure, ICS structure and response has been very effective. We've been trying to ramp back some of the restrictions, of course, Omicron variant kind of got in our way as Delta did before. We hope to have a little bit better news as we get back together in the coming months around working together and collaborating in the office, especially where that makes significantly more sense. And just a really a credit in 2021 to all the staff and that incident command structure for really using innovative ideas around apps and technology to to support the canvassing of of the staff every day, providing clinics for not only COVID-19 vaccines, which we did in the spring of 2021, but also maintaining our regular schedule of flu vaccines to make sure that not only our employees, but their family and friends outside the organization are safe as well. But looking forward, what we're looking to do is even get better. Never satisfied in safety. We're going to be procuring some EHNS technical software. This is going to allow us to more and mobily and in real time track our trends on safety and report things. And I also have feedback to Incident Review Board that I'll talk about about you shortly here. So this effort also touches on the foundations of our Vision 2030 goals. It's, you know, digitization, digitization, keeping everybody safe and resources aligned. Obviously, a resilience and will also have an environmental, social and governance component to that to make sure that that's all able to be imported into reporting in that area as well. And in all, in doing all this, we're also going to make sure that we're maintaining the the privacy of our of our employees where that matters in their health. We're also going to take on an effort to enhance our job briefings. That's an OSHA requirement to make sure that we're doing jobs, job safety analysis and briefings for every job. That is something that is routine for us. But again, an area you don't want to you know, pay attention to. It's something you don't want to get too habitual and become complacent. And so we're going to take another hard look at that and ensure that we have consistency in reporting on that as well. And then finally, we're going to be looking at our updating our hearing conservation policy. So after a thorough review of occupational health program last year, and this is continuous improvement, so consistent with our culture in that area, we've identified an improvement opportunity associated with hearing conservation specifically. We believe full review of the policy procedure and optimal hearing protection to the role or job function application will enhance our metrics in this area. I should note that, you know, one of the actions that we took actually prior to COVID, we were going down this path of getting an occupational health nurse practitioner. You may have seen Franco Scarpelli report in other venues. He is on board right now, and he's helping us develop these programs. But that was actually identified prior to COVID and came into immediate effect during COVID. And now we're taking those lessons as we get through COVID and kind of get more accustomed to what the expectations are COVID to the rest of our programs. And this is one area we feel we we should focus on near term. That'd also be remiss if I didn't mention. I'm sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Couldn't agree with you more on the hearing conservation. It's a good point. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. And we'll keep you regularly.
I couldn't hear that. What was that?
You're on the list. You're on the list, Chairman. We'll take a look. I do want to just make sure before I leave this particular topic, just in 2020 and 2021, just the tremendous collaboration we had with our labor partners as well, IBW, UWU, A. Obviously, a very dynamic time in terms of employee, employee health, environmental health and safety. They've been extremely collaborative with us, and we couldn't have accomplished any of this without them. So IBW, UWA, of course, our partners at CSDA and PEP on the canal side as well. And looking forward in the labor area, all those contracts are offered negotiation this year. So it'll be an interesting time. We'll keep the board regularly updated as as we go through that process. Next slide, please. Another way we stay on our toes is doing a lot of drills and exercises. I'll just focus on a few here that we accomplished in in 2021. We actually did 59 drills slash exercises and completed 100% of all of our regulatory required exercises. We do above and beyond those regulatory required ones as well. But just some examples of what we do there is Preston Fisher Ferry FERC Emergency Management Plan. That's basically where we bring in the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission and other observers to actually do an exercise. We do this at each of the hydro plants, probably on around an eight to 10-year rotation. We drill these every year, but those are more functional. I'm sorry, tabletop where this is more functional. And I had a great response. No, no findings, no observations there that were not expected. And of course, we we put together any feedback into immediate action and updating those plans. We also hosted the New York State Utility Mutual Aid Assistance Exercise this year. This was actually a chance encounter I had with Carl Taylor of Avon Grid, you know, where we were talking about some of the storm responses in Western New York and other places. And in collaboration with Ryan Hawthorne of Central Hudson and other energy executives, we pulled together the emergency management teams to have a basically open exploratory conversation about how we could do this better. So we created an exercise primarily focused on weather, as you can imagine. As I constantly tell my emergency management team, it's it's a storm. It's going to be a storm. So prepare for a storm. So that's how we always think of our incidents. And of course, that helps us think about other potential incidents, but storms are what we focus on, especially with this collaboration. And that went very well. And that exercise went very well. We also have taken kind of a more proactive preemptive stance in terms of lifting the movable dams and preventing flooding on the New York State Canal System. So for the benefit of those who are not quite familiar with the infrastructure, most of the eastern side of the canals is really the Mohawk River, which has movable dams to create kind of a stepwise elevation for navigation of vessels. And when a storm hits, obviously, those pools can flood local communities if we're not moving the water properly. So in the past, often, you know, we would in prior operations, we would leave them in place, just kind of like focusing more on the navigation aspect of it. We are taking now a more proactive resilience and kind of defense against the storms stance on this thing, providing the mariners and the marine operators and other folks adequate notice and working with public officials and elected along the way. But really making sure that we're doing the least amount of damage that's in some cases inevitable around a hurricane. And I think that's been effective in 2021. We've been practicing that more regularly. Looking forward, just we're going to take all the lessons that we've done from these 59 and other exercises and continue to press those lessons learned. We're going to can talk to hazard vulnerability assessments just to make sure we're, you know, looking for gaps that we don't routinely encounter without that proactive look. And then, of course, refresh our regional crisis management plans to make sure everybody's informed on what to do in each one of those instances. Next slide, please, Carly. Major projects, as Justin touched on many of these things. You know, it's a record year in capital investment for the New York Power Authority. We have a lot going on. And that's a record so far. You know, as Justin pointed out, we're going to be doing quite a bit more, but I'll just touch on a few milestones on these projects that you're familiar with from all the approvals that you've done over the years. But in 2021, probably the most significant thing at Next Gen Niagara is the completion of the first controls of Robert Moses Unit 12. Fooling with the controls of a major hydro project is is often a very delicate process, and it gets us concerned, but we successfully accomplished that. A few bugs, a few lessons learned, and we're going to carry that on to the other 12 units as we do the upgrades there. Smart Path, we talked about, we met about 50% of the milestones in the fall of 2021. There is some ongoing construction of the 86 miles there, segment two of MA1 with foundation work is is on ongoing now. And we do have some significant hard outages scheduled at the end of this quarter for stringing the conductors for segment two. And then, of course, construction of segment three and the final segment will commence in the summer of 2022. So on track there is well. Central East Energy Connect or SEEK, I just ongoing construction through October 21, two towers, I'm sorry, new towers and conductor are being installed to support and connection between our Princeton substation and New Scotland substation. Looking forward in this area, of course, we got significant capital work that remains on some of the projects that I just named and others. But we are also focusing our battery storage at our Willis substation. That's a 20 megawatt hour storage facility located adjacent to our Willis substation. That's a significant demonstration for the really the entire state in terms of learning all the different things we need to do in terms of code compliance, emergency response, you know, and how this this battery will work in the system going forward. So a lot of lessons going to be learned in that. So we'll be focusing on that. Smart Path Connect, Justin touched on. You know, we're we're the Project Article 7 application was determined complete in December of 2021. Settlement negotiations are now ongoing with the agencies, and the team hopes to secure approval in Q3 of 2022, which will allow us the in-service date that we hope to hold in Q4 2025 if everything goes well there. And then our famous Y49 reconductory that we've talked about over the the past year, 2021. Knock on wood, since we've done our repairs, our remedial work, we haven't had an issue on Y49. Of course, we brought to the board last month, I believe, that we're we're looking to now replace the entire Nassau County segment. So that will, that replacement will begin in earnest as we start to make it all the notifications and outage requirements that we need to the New York ISO. And we hope to have that system conductor will be complete by May of 2023. So that's a significant schedule in a very busy area that we're hoping to accomplish by 2023. So that's my accomplishments look forward in three major areas is, you know, kind of Justin points out, I kind of joke with my staff. Sometimes there's a lot of exciting work going on at the New York Power Authority, a lot of its external facing that we hear from state of the state and the governor and the budget. But we also generate and transmit electricity. That's our core. And I always remind my team of that. And this is what we're focused on for now. And I'm open to any questions.
Thanks very much, Joe, and kudos to you and your team. As you said, G and T is what we're, who we are and what we're about. So appreciate leaning into that and with the incredible investments that we're making. All the more so as we address, you know, the transmission, the T component of G and T. So exciting times ahead for sure. And having the team and talent in place to achieve and navigate all that is all the more critical for us. So kudos to you and everyone for the continuing great outcomes. Thoughts, comments, questions for Joe? Okay. Sarah, on our customer side and some of our other key initiatives, those charging stations and all that good stuff. Look, look for, look forward to your thoughts and where we sit. The floor is yours.
Great. Well, happy new year.
The podium, the podium is yours.
On the podium, thank you. Yeah, no, happy new year. I feel like 2021 should be starting now, and we're already a month into 2022. That being said, when we started off 2021, there were three kind of core revenue streams that my teams were focused on. One was the transmission build. The second is the commercial contracting, whether bidding or contracting through economic development programs, our hydro and our generation, as Joe talked about. And the third has been our behind the meter and customer-facing projects with the evolution of Vision 2030 and the increase and the shift to focus more on transmission with. with Filtoya leading up the NIPA Development Unit. I had the opportunity to focus a lot more on our commercial electricity supply PNL as well as behind the meter and supported the development of strategies around that that I'm looking forward to implementing this year. Next slide. We had a very strong, a very strong year. And here again is the representation of our commercial electricity supply. While our economic development programs are supporting the economic growth and vitality of New York State, it also is providing stable contracting and long-term contracts for our hydro. So directly supporting the Vision 2030 of preserving and enhancing our hydro value. You can see that we have consistently contracted and allocated megawatts to support job creation retention as well as capital investment in the state. So a strong year there. And then on the merchant side with the unallocated hydro, we have worked very closely, as you know, in the last couple of years with risk and finance and developing a hedging strategy to support ensuring that we have less volatility in what is 60% of our EBITDA margin, which is coming from electricity supply writ large, protecting the downside, but ensuring too that we are taking into account the market constraints, the hydro flow volumes and, and the ability to capture some upside relative to the wholesale market. And what you'll see here in terms of the fact that we came in almost 10% above the target through the end of the year is because of the increase in gas prices, which drove up the wholesale electricity market prices. And we were able to in real time capture that margin. And by way of example, the upstate energy prices in the month of December were about 28% over our target. So we're, we're entering the 2022 according to our hedging strategy. And I know you might be hearing about that again later, but you know, very strong performance across the commercial electricity supply in 2021. Next slide. You'd asked Chairman last year about how we truly performed in terms of economic development. And so I wanted to put in a slide here to share that with you. You can see the high level statistics. What I can share with you is that this is an aggregate number that includes both new allocations and new jobs committed as well as extensions of existing customers. But if I break these numbers down more specifically, we allocated 77 new megawatts to new companies and organizations. That represents 73 new customers that are taking advantage of our economic development programs. We have created and supported the creation of over 28,000 new jobs, predominantly in the hospital and medical arena, where Columbia University's Irving Medical Center will be creating over 10 and a half thousand jobs. And along the lines of that, with the relatively large investment in footprints and buildings, have 2.2 billion of new capital commitments that came in, in 2021. So if we reflect on how this works with, within the last couple of years, 2021 had higher new megawatt allocations, new job creation and new capital commitments higher than 2020, which of course was a COVID emergency response kind of a year, but also higher than 2019, which was an incredibly strong economic, economically strong year for the nation. So we processed or we received over 100 applications. And again, these are the results that we had. Next slide.
Thank you.
When it comes to our customer business lines, again, another strong year, it's, we're all fatigued from COVID. But the reality is that we adapted to the headwinds that came in, whether it's through supply chain, freezing of customer budgets and with our energy efficiency business line, we're able to essentially meet our capital spend as well as I have an extremely robust pipeline for next year, well above the target that we had for 223 million. And then when it comes to e-mobility, I can just share with you that when I go and talk to customers, our key customers, there are two areas that they're most excited about. The electrification of their transport facilities and their transit fleets. And secondly, solar plus storage. So it's very, it's a very strong market need that NIPA is, is coming to meet, both when it comes to supporting the Evolve network, which is building out the fast charging network across the state to reduce range anxiety, but also to our customer facing business, which is working and developing master plans with the major transit facilities across and agencies across the state. And you can see here, we had a very strong sign up for customer contracts. Of course, it's red. We've talked about it a few times this year when it comes to your comment about learnings and the headwinds that we see in 2022. Again, the supply chain has had an impact on equipment. We see significant inflationary pressures on steel and some of the other core materials that go into both our behind the meter solar and storage projects, but also too relative to the charging infrastructure. Last year was the first year that we had a full, first full year of implementation of the, of the Evolve public facing chargers. And we took a lot of lessons learned there in terms of the expected timeframe relative to permitting, interconnection with the utilities, signing up hosts because it's working with the private sector and everybody has their own particular interests. So I anticipate we'll adjust the forecast for next year so that this will be green and we are more realistic about what it takes to build it out. But that being said, we are now the largest public facing DCFC charging network in all of New York State outside of Tesla. And as we know, Tesla only serves its own vehicles. On New York Energy Manager and DER flexibility, like I said, and as you saw with Justin, we had a very strong year. We worked with the public school system and Justin flagged the 22 megawatts that we did at 47 school sites across the state. We are definitely facing headwinds in this coming year with, again, the inflationary pressures, but we'll continue to move towards the 2025 targets that we have in terms of installed capacity. And then when it comes to New York Energy Manager, again, we don't talk about it in too much detail, but really we're focused on the flexibility of the grid, optimizing the energy usage of our customers. And as you can see here, this metric was met for the year. It specifically was supporting the opportunity for our customers to reduce their energy usage, save on their energy bills and ultimately reduce the amount of demands, supply side construction of renewables that's needed to reach our 2040 target. Next slide. Here, just a couple of highlights from last year. As I mentioned, when it comes to our commercial electricity supply, we've really been focused on integrating new capabilities into the team to help us better structure those in an increasingly competitive and volatile market with the integration of renewables. We spent a lot of last year actually building the back office infrastructure, the EDI infrastructure, the billing in order for us to execute on the retail electricity supply strategy. That being said, we have two anchor customers. We closed a deal with Mohawk Fine Papers and also with New York Law School. New York Law School was 100% renewable product or green product. And that is really the direction that we're looking to take the organization. So we look forward to reporting on incremental closed transactions in 2022. When it comes to energy efficiency, because it's such a mature business, we don't, we don't spend a lot of time on it. But if you look at the statistic here in terms of the projects that we've, we've implemented over the last couple of decades, it's avoided us building over 275 megawatts of supply side renewables. So it's a critical factor in us getting to 2040. So we'll look forward to working with finance to ensure that we have the financing mechanisms to support this incredibly essential work with our customers, particularly the state agencies who have massive, massive building footprints and, and very, very strong need to continue to make those as energy efficient as possible to support their bottom lines. Then outside of that, really, we've been, we looked at and continue to evolve the new and emerging products and services. It's incredibly important that we continue to leverage new technology, the digital overlay, supporting our digitalization pillar such that we continue to provide the products and services that our customers need. And so look forward to sharing a little bit more with you on the virtual power plan and the integrated offering that is currently in our product development lifecycle, in addition to the analytics that we look to continue to incorporate in the customer account center with NIPA. And then not only are we looking externally, but as the judge mentioned, we're also looking internally. How can we continue to effectively and most efficiently deliver on the products and services? You see highlighted here a couple of statistics. In the end, we're looking at faster ways to deliver the product, less touch to incorporate the volumes that have increased over time. COVID enabled us to leverage new technology with digital remote solutions. We had a 360 degree camera. And so our, our project managers didn't have to go out to the site on a regular basis. They were able to do vendor walkthroughs, status checks, all virtually. And we look forward to capitalizing on that. And then lastly, when it comes to Nicet Ventures, again, these new and emerging products and services require a lighter touch, the opportunity to, while still being compliant with our statutory authority and the policies and procedures that we have with the NIPA, the opportunity to grow and to incubate where the sustaining organization isn't, isn't overlaying too much bureaucracy. And so we will, we'd launched that in the last meeting and will continue to support the incubation and agile scaling of those businesses. And finally, with the operations and UOPS and COMOPS coming together, we've had a lot of good work and analysis that's been undertaken, particularly in Q4 of last year, identifying opportunities for standardization processes, both within operations broadly, but then also across the organization. So see organizational synergies as well as significant process improvements for our project delivery in 2022. Next slide. Customer satisfaction. When I joined NIPA three years ago, I requested that we introduce a customer satisfaction benchmark. And you can see that in the, in the two years since we introduced it, we have now reached top quartile amongst the electric utility business index. This takes a village. So as you can see in the different components that we have, whether it's billing, contracts, customer service, it touches all aspects of our organization. And some of the highlights, I think, that have supported us getting to top quartile in the last couple, in the last year have been our EdCap 1.0 and 2.0, which provided bill deferment as well as incremental allocations to help people and organizations come out of COVID. Secondly, increased efficiency in our contract turnaround time as well as the communication during contracting. And third, in products and services, the new marketing website we put out as well as the more proactive communications around those, the new products and services. Next slide.
That's a great outcome. Kudos to you and the entire team there. It's great, great to see. No question.
Great. And then looking forward in 2022, again, as Justin highlighted, we're a leader in executing state policy across the board, including the energy sector. I think the state of the state is an excellent example of that and met most of the ideas that were submitted for that and were picked up. We're coming from COMOPS and operations writ large. And so we're going to be very focused on ensuring that we're executing those, working very closely with our customer base and enhancing those relationships as well as ensuring that we're as impactful as possible in the relationships we have with the other state agencies such as Nicert. The more that we can collaborate, the greater, the greater impact we can have for the state. Secondly, implementation of the strategies, both the commercial electricity supply and behind the meter. These are directly supporting Vision 2030 execution. They incorporated rigorous scenario analyses and financials associated with that. There, I'm looking to support further the analysis and support of moving off of fossil fuels and ensuring that not only are we focused on the hydros from a commercial and market insight, but we continue as a COMOPS team to support the customer, the market insights and, and commercial, you know, management of our fossil fleets. And third, behind the meter, again, we have some headwinds, as I mentioned, relative to COVID and coming out of, coming out of the COVID pandemic, if we do. But again, we have some excellent new products and services to integrate and to continue to have that specific PNL be both a, an ex, a strong execution of energy policy as well as have a bottom line contribution. We touched on customer satisfaction. You know, I want to thank my colleagues and the other enterprise groups for supporting that. It's very much the same with the engagement numbers that we get internally within NIPA. It's everybody's role and job to support that. So we'll continue to work on enterprise ownership of those to see increasing results in that. And then finally, in terms of relating and getting closer to our customers. When I joined, we also hosted the first Customer Clean Energy Exchange event. It was an in-person key customer event. We were supposed to have it last year. We didn't, we weren't able to because of COVID. So looking forward to putting that together to help further enhance the relationships we have with both our public and private sector customers and ensure that we maintain the role of trusted energy advisor for all of the organizations we work with. And finally, I just want to thank the COMOPS team and everybody that is behind the results that we have as well as the results that we'll have to look forward to in 2022. Like to thank my EMC colleagues for supporting the work that we're doing and as well as the board for your support and your questions to ensure that we continue to be leading and, and deliver on our commitments. With that, take any questions.
We thank you for being thankful, Sarah. So well done to you. Well done to you and the team for the continued evolution and growth of all these critically important initiatives, a better position and interface with the customers we serve and why we're doing what we're doing. So well done to you and the team. Thoughts, comments, questions for Sarah?
I just think it's great progress in the face of two plus years of COVID. I think, you know, you've really been in the short end of the stick on as far as having a rich opportunity to progress, but you've done very well, given the conditions. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I would agree with that. The other question that I had, Sarah, and they're sort of connected or related, but indirectly. When I look at how you measure yourself in customer satisfaction, I see the area where we missed, and if I'm reading this correctly, where we missed our benchmark is around communication. Again, continuing to improve, to get to where you want. And then looking at the scorecard that you gave for yourself of all of the things that you're working on in commercial ops, the e-mobility area where there was the red. As we continue to look at how best, you know, obviously electrification of transportation is a key part of what we're trying to do to help the state do what it's committed to doing. How do you see you're able to move forward? And everyone experiences the supply chain. They're real. We have them. Everyone has them. But the communication piece of how we expect to deliver going forward, because, you know, it's not going to happen if we don't get the charging stations and people, you know, getting that mental or psychological hesitancy that people have already around EV is only going to be magnified if we're not able to give people confidence that we're able to build out the, the charging station infrastructure. How do you see how we're going to, what do we need to do? Are we communicating with the state? What, what other changes that you're making in terms of how you're going to deliver and how you're communicating where we are and where we think we realistically can be as we've set out the goals for the year ahead?
Yeah, so that's a good question. So the, the installation of the chargers is different in my mind from the service that individuals receive when they drive up to a charging station. Actually, the, the customer satisfaction survey I'm talking about here is, does not include the individuals that would be using our, our evolved charging stations. It's for the other customer facing, to the extent that we're working with the transit facilities. It would be captured in there for working with the MTA or otherwise. But specifically for individual residents, that is, is viewed basically through a social media and getting, you know, five stars, four stars, what have you. So there's a lot of real time input that we have in terms of people's satisfaction with our network. What's most important to them is that when they drive up to it, it works. And where we see feedback and where the management of communication is most important with customer satisfaction there is immediately addressing it if it isn't working and demonstrating that we can be very responsive to fixing the problem. So that would be my response relative to customer satisfaction for our network. Residents don't necessarily Residents don't necessarily know where we're planning to put them, right? What they end up seeing is once they drive into a TOPS or, or a Marabido that, that there's a charger there and, and now they know for, for next time. So we need to continue to ensure that our uptime and availability is there. And, and, and that, that's an incredibly important asset management initiative that we have. And we're working very closely with UOPS in, in terms of trying to identify the most effective way to do that. Relative to the chargers themselves, I mean, that requires an education within, within the leadership team, um, as well as an education with our, our state agencies to, to be able to articulate the reality of how long it takes. Now, NIPA is a market accelerator in this area. Clearly what we're hoping is with the monies that are coming back from Build Back Better and the other infrastructure, there's a significant amount that's going to EVs. And so hopefully that will help support the acceleration of the build out where NIPA doesn't have to do all of it. And the private sector, which is fundamentally our goal, gets animated more and is able to do more itself. So I don't think there's a single, uh, single silver bullet. But again, it's, it's working with, um, uh, with the, the state agencies. And again, ensuring that, that we're on top of, of, of where the market's going.
Sarah, um, do we, do, uh, these electric charging stations, do they show up on iMaps and Google Maps and Waze? They do?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Yep.
Um, being the, the, the newest person to the board, one question that I get that I'm not sure how to answer or that I've gotten that I'm not sure how to answer is how one becomes a customer of NIPA, right?
Yeah. So, uh, if you are an organization that is willing to commit capital and creation or retention of jobs, you can apply for megawatt allocations of our hydro power, depending on where you, uh, live or where your organization is in, in the state. It will depend on which, which specific hydro power program you can avail yourselves of. But ultimately Recharge New York is statewide. So that is how, uh, an organization, not for profit or otherwise, would become a, a customer of NIPA.
So it's a totally, uh, it's not a proactive process on NIPA's part. It's really, uh, I'm looking for resources. I come to you. NIPA doesn't prospect, I guess is.
No, we do. We work incredibly closely with the Economic State Development Corporation, with all of the regional economic, uh, development councils. And we proactively market ourselves all the time. We have targets every year for the number of customers and the megawatts that are being allocated. So it is a very proactive and, uh, very pro, the, the account managers and economic development are incredibly proactive there. We're not just sitting on, sitting on our hands, waiting for people to knock on our doors.
I asked it because I'm, I've considered myself a pretty active person in this community and I wasn't aware, right? So, so I'm wondering.
It would be nice to talk offline with you on that relative to your community, to see how we can, uh, publicize ourselves better there. Happy to do.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of our core customers be appreciate our municipalities and, you know, the public or, uh, that we serve. So when you hear Sarah talk about customers, I mean, that's a lot of the agencies and entities that we're focused on. But in terms of, yeah, economic development and those who are otherwise investing in their business and their communities, uh, we're the enabler, you know, we're a facilitator. And there are the variety of programs that Sarah's just, uh, recap. So, uh, I agree, some offline conversation would probably be beneficial. So you feel more comfortable and, uh, confident in, uh, discussing opportunities to interact with us. So.
Thanks.
Um, okay, if I can, then, um, this, this is nothing else for Sarah again. Uh, appreciate your efforts, your leadership and the great work of your team as we all agree. Um, the focus has come a long way, you know, under your leadership. So well done, uh, Sarah. Thank you. Um, Adam, uh, it's been referenced a few times, uh, you and your team have been good stewards, uh, and, uh, have effectively, and I'll say creatively leveraged our balance sheet opportunities to ensure we're even better positioned to fund and underwrite, um, all that we expect of ourselves and others want need from us. So, um, pick it up, um, the podium or you're not there. Uh, the, the screen is yours. The, the screen is yours.
Thank, thank you, Chairman. Good morning, trustees, uh, members of, of NIPA and the public. Um, just to go off of what, uh, we've been talking about the last meeting, this is our, our, where we see ourselves, uh, today, uh, as a look back on where we're going to end, uh, 2021, uh, results. This is unaudited, of course, so still going through the audit process. We'll be coming back in March with KPMG and giving the official numbers. But the unaudited numbers, um, are that we will make 72.6 million net income against the target of 40 million. If you recall, at last meeting, I said that the range or the expected value at that time was, uh, 69.7, uh, with a high of 83 expected case. So we, we sort of are right between the goalposts, um, as we sit here now. Uh, but it's a certainly very good result. Um, a lot of, uh, go over the key drivers, but again, just to, um, put an emphasis on, while this is 32 million better than the net income target from an EBITDA perspective, uh, we did actually even better with the $62 million, um, improvement against the EBITDA target, um, which helps again, drive a lot of our metrics. So the major drivers, um, whereas we've spoken before, out of the generation margins, uh, are, Sarah mentioned and Justin as well, our hedging strategy worked very well last year, uh, both minimizing our downside, uh, risk going into the year and allowing us to capture some of the upside, obviously not all because of the cost of the hedging. But, uh, we were able to, uh, beat the, the target that was set, uh, last year by about 30, almost 20, 25 million dollars. And the transmission margins also exceeded our projections. Those are driven, um, by the new annual transmission revenue requirement that was filed and, and started July 1st of during the year, as well as the fax revenues that we received related to congestion where we get additional revenue pricing, um, as a result of that, which helped offset some of the lower actual, you know, actual generation at the, at the hydro plants. Uh, margins for the non-utility were slightly behind. Uh, again, some of that's a timing issue, I think, place to energy efficiency projects. To the extent that those, there were delays or slower to pick up. As, as Sarah mentioned, uh, our fees go according to how quickly, uh, those projects are either completed and, and, and money is spent and the fees are accrued. On the expense side, we did very well in terms of our O and M, uh, better than 46 million. As mentioned earlier, two major driver of that, after all this sort of puts and takes and, um, you know, unplanned expenses during the year. Uh, the major driver was, as we mentioned, the OPEB, um, merger of canals into the, into the NIPA truck, as well as, um, the implementation of the Medicare Advantage Plan for NIPA employees, um, whoever reached the age of 65 and Medicare eligible. So that was a major savings and, um, other savings as well. As we did the bend of the cost curve to help offset other increases we saw during the year. Um, on the sort of non-operating side, the real major variance there was on the depreciation, which was higher. That's a non-cash item this year. Um, a result of a couple of factors. One was the, the fact that some of our, our plant was put into service sooner than was actually planned, which is actually a good thing. Uh, with respect to transmission projects, this depreciation ends up becoming a, uh, major component of our revenue requirement to be filed in subsequent years. So, uh, being ahead of that is actually a good for us down the road, as well as, uh, we undertook a depreciation study for the first time, uh, in four, in, in 40 years, uh, since we had done a depreciation study. And, uh, as a result of that, one quarter of it, um, took effect for the last, for the fourth quarter. Uh, it was only as of the date of the study's completion and looking forward. So some of that got picked up there as well. Um, and we, and we've already accounted for that increase in, in the 22 budget. But overall, I would say it was a, uh, a successful year, especially given the challenges that we had, um, last year during, um, COVID, where we actually had a, a net loss. So taken together, when you look at the two years together, uh, we come out doing pretty well and getting back on track to where we want to be on that long-term trajectory of, you know, increasing our funds available for debt service. So we can continue to fund and make those major capital investments. Uh, we've been speaking about both, uh, Justin and Joe Kessel and his report, uh, going forward. Um, I would stop and just take any questions here and then just, um, and then I'll mention a couple of things that we have going on, uh, starting right now in 22, but we'd stop here for a question.
So no surprises as you hit the finish line. You're giving us, uh, the projected range to finish. And, uh, nothing came out of, uh, the woodwork late in the game that you didn't anticipate.
No, we're, we're doing pretty good. But again, during the course of the audit, there may be items that might pop up, but.
Oh yeah, come on now. You're confident. Okay. No disclaimers accepted.
Okay.
Okay.
But, but going into, I mean, if there are any other questions on, on 21?
Yeah, go ahead. Look, give us a look ahead.
Yeah, so I mean.
We talked obviously about plan, but.
Yeah, yeah, so. As we look ahead for the plan, um, again, we're very, um, optimistic. We have some, and we have a lot of wind at our back going into 22. I think we're well positioned in a number of areas. Um, having a very cold January so far has actually been a good thing as well. Uh, always better to have it a little bit colder than a little bit warmer. So mother nature was on our side, uh, so far. Um, but, um, the headwinds we're, we're approaching and Sarah touched on it as well as that we're really doing a deep dive into the impacts of both the supply chain and the inflationary pressures, uh, that have been observed or the inflation was actually realized during the year of 7% increase in overall inflation highest print in 40 years. Uh, so we're doing a deep dive throughout all of our contracts and, and, uh, looking at the adequacy of our contingencies and our, our cost estimates across the board to ensure that we're accounting for that new level of increased pricing, even if the inflation is transitory, as they say. Uh, we want to be prepared in case it's not, but also the, the mere fact that the base level of cost of certain goods and certain services is going to be higher. Um, certainly we've seen a lot of that in the commodities area. Uh, commodity prices have been increasing. So we are, uh, under, undergoing that deep dive and analysis. And, uh, by the time we get to our next finance committee meeting, I will, um, be giving an update in terms of any findings that we've come out of that, that we think are relevant to be highlighted. Um, but, um, and then is, as we also, as Justin also mentioned, and as you approved or would be approving this meeting, is the, um, inaugural bond issue for the green transmission revenue bonds. And, uh, we will be, we're on a very fast, um, process to try to get this, um, the marketing going and get into the market. Ideally, we'd like to get in ahead of the Fed meeting in March so that there's no surprises or in terms of rates and the impact on the interest rates yet. And then with that, um, I'm planning to do a very extensive, uh, marketing effort because this is new credit. Um, there is a, a story to be told. Also gives us an opportunity just to tell the overall NIPA story. So we're going to be doing an aggressive roadshow, um, hitting some of the major cities. Obviously we'll be reaching out to our largest investors, you know, and giving them, uh, uh, an idea of what we're doing and giving them some sense of the overall, um, direction we're going. And, uh, and just doing a lot of marketing outreach on that, on that front because I think it's very important that the investment community really understand the NIPA's story from our Vision 2030 and, and where we're going in terms of making these major transmission investments and what it's going to require, uh, to finance those. So that's going to be a major activity for the first quarter. As Justin also mentioned, we're, um, going to be working with through the, uh, state division of budget, um, through the budget negotiations. And hopefully we'll achieve, we'll achieve, uh, approval of our ability to file with the Department of Financial Services, captive insurance company. Um, this could be a real game changer for NIPA in terms of being able to manage, um, you know, significant risks that are currently uninsurable. So it will give us the ability to really have a, um, an opportunity to get ahead of what could be sort of, you know, major black swan tail type risks that are currently, uh, we're unable to insure today. So we look forward to seeing that happen and, uh, and, and standing that up by the end of the year.
Well, as I said, kudos, uh, good combination, good stewardship and, uh, creatively leveraging, uh, our balance sheet literally and figuratively. So, uh, you know, well done and know that you've got us nicely positioned, uh, going forward and got out ahead of a rising rate environment and all the rest. So I'm confident, uh, we're nicely positioned to navigate whatever comes our way. So I appreciate your leadership and efforts there. Anything else, uh, for, for Adam? So why he's taking us through, you know, playing for the year and prior meetings. I think we got a good snapshot there. So big picture, uh, kudos, uh, uh, team and, uh, organization. Uh, everyone, uh, listening or, uh, who observes, uh, as a board, we're incredibly proud of, uh, what you've accomplished again in 21 and even more excited in terms of what lies ahead for, uh, 22. So we thank you for, uh, tremendous effort, commitment and the passion you bring for, uh, who NIPA is and those we serve. And, uh, uh, so proud to, uh, in this case, uh, listen to, uh, an outstanding, uh, straight A, uh, report card and, uh, uh, know that you'll more than back that up again in, uh, 2022. Okay, um, with that, we got a couple of committee reports, uh, given a late breaking calendar change for, uh, Mike Baboni. We're going to have him go first. Uh, we had a cyber and physical security committee meeting, uh, this morning. Mike, if you're still with us, uh, you could present your, uh, D report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So today the Security Committee heard from about NIPA's cybersecurity posture and the 2022 plans, including a independent assessment of the cybersecurity program using the NIST cybersecurity framework and how NIPA will be using the framework annually to assess and prioritize future program improvements. We also heard about recently completed drills and reviews of our FERC and NERC regulated security programs. The, the key here, Mr. Chairman, as you know, is that we are in a time of kind of unprecedented cybersecurity activity. In fact, if you just take a look at 2021, the first, uh, first quarter versus the quarter the year before, ransomware attacks have gone up 62%. And with all the different things going in the world, including what might be happening in Ukraine, uh, we are ever vigilant to make sure that we understand the threat landscape and its ever evolving nature. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. It's always sobering as, uh, uh, for those of us laypeople, uh, who sit through, uh, those meetings and be assured you have, always have you, Eric, Rob and the team have our attention. Uh, we all get, uh, the significance of it. But, uh, when we see firsthand, uh, what's coming at us literally, uh, on a daily basis, it's really, uh, astounding. So, uh, the bad guys we accept are always out to get us. And, uh, we applaud, uh, you, Eric, Rob and all the good guys that we have, uh, to ensure we keep them at, at bay. So, uh, well done and, uh, keep us posted and keep us in tune.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thanks, Mike. I know you got to hop. Um, a couple of weeks ago, we had, uh, a robust discussion around a variety of issues uh, under the Finance and, uh, Risk Committee. So, uh, with, uh, our report today is our finance, uh, Chair Tracy McKibben.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you suggested, as you mentioned, um, a little under two weeks ago, we had our Finance and Risk Committee meeting where we adopted the minutes of the meeting. We received one staff report and we adopted a number of items that I'll go through, um, in just a minute. Um, there are a couple of items that we are submitting to the full Board of Trustees for adoption. I'll do them in three tranches, um, and the first one. I'll do them in three tranches, and the first one, first tranche contains six items. And they are approval and adoption of a resolution authorizing the proposed issuance of one or more series of transmission project revenue bonds and related actions and approvals. Adam just referred to these bonds in his update for the for the Board of Trustees. The next is the authorization to release an amount of up to $65 million in funding to support separately financed projects of the authority. In addition, the trustees affirmed that such release is feasible and advisable and that the amounts presently set aside as reserves in the operating fund are adequate for purposes specified in Section 5032 of the Authority's General Bond Resolution and that the amount of $65 million is not needed for any other purposes specified in Section 503, 1A through C of the Authority's General Bond Resolution. We recommend approval of a five-year contract in the amount of $71.5 million for their engineering, design, testing, furnishing and delivery of transmission line steel pole structures and anchor bolt cages and an additional 20 million for unforeseen expenses, a reserve, so to speak, for a total amount of $91.5 million to Saber Industries of Alvarado, Alvarado, Texas. And the reserve, you know, as we talked about throughout some of our presentations, is related to supply chain surprises and delays. Next, recommend approval of a two-year contract award to, in the amount of $32.9 million, an additional 5 million for unforeseen expenses for a total amount of $37.9 million to Eleknor Hawkeye of Hoppake, New York. And then recommend approval of the transfer of ownership of the Authority's King Air B350 SNFL 539 aircraft to the New York State Police. The State Police provided an information supporting the transfer in a letter that's been, that was dated January 22nd, 2022, for the board to consider, and hope everyone's had a chance to review that. And then we recommend approval of the personal service contracts to seven best value and technically qualified vendors for our enterprise risk and resilience consulting services. This is in the aggregate, aggregate amount of $10 million for a term of five years. And these contracts are to Aon Risk Services Northeast of New York, Customer Network Inc. of Marietta, Georgia, Deloitte and Touche of New York, Ernst &amp; Young of New York, Guide House of New York, Marsh USA Inc. of New York, and the Brattle Group of Boston, Massachusetts. So I now ask for this tranche, this first tranche of six items, I ask that these be adopted as I've described them.
And I'll take that as a motion if we could have a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Judge. Again, all were amply discussed a couple of weeks ago. But if anyone has any further reflections or questions for Tracy or Adam or the team? Otherwise, all in favor, aye? Any opposed? Motion carried.
Great. So next item is the approval of the NIPA out risk appetite statement. This is a resolution and I will call on Adrian Lotto Walker, our VP and Chief Risk and Resilience Officer, to give an update on our risk appetite statement.
Morning, trustee McKibben, EMC, my NIPA and COWS colleagues. I am Adrian Lotto Walker, the Chief Risk and Resilience Officer here at NIPA and COWS. Next slide, please. So recently, a question was posed at the Finance and Risk Committee about the how the maturity, risk maturity is interdependent and aligned with our risk appetite statement. So as you can see from the slide here, the two concepts are certainly symbiotic and not divergent. Conceptually, the risk maturity enhances throughout the year and has it does so. We'll be able to position ourselves to achieve more strategic, more of our strategic goals as outlined in Vision 2030 and take on more risk. That said, we will be working closely with our controls team because we need to and ensure, continue to ensure a robust controls environment in order to meet those strategic objectives. Next slide, please. So speaking specifically of the improvement, again, the board asked to see how our risk appetite aligns with our current risk maturity. So this bar graph graphically illustrates that relationship. The red dot you see on the screen is where our risk appetite level is as identified vis a vis that RAS statement. And as you can see, by the end of 2022, our risk level will be at a three, which is again well above the industry benchmark. This is in alignment with all of our proposed programmatic improvements that we spoke about at the Finance and Risk Committee. We have an action plan associated that has been fully resourced with the support, thank you, of Adam as well as Justin and as well as the EMC who are supportive of maturing the risk and controls environment throughout 2022. Next slide, please. Another question arose during the suggested KRIs associated with the risk appetite statement. One was about ensuring that we had robust oversight, if you will, over our data and our digitization goals and platforms. So as you can see here in the red, we did add a KRI, a board level KRI around data. And then secondly, trustee Baboni had asked a question about tracking workers' compensation injuries, not just fatalities. So that additional change has also been reflected here on the slide and would be in the KRI dashboard going forward. Next slide, please. And then lastly, Judge O'Kendry, you had asked a question about how we intend to operationalize this risk appetite statement, right? So that it wasn't just a theoretical statement, but how it will be tactically applied. So this heat map is an illustration of that. If you notice, just by way of example, if we, together with the business units, scored something, a potential enterprise risk and let's say in the yellow, a three and a three, a three of impact and a three of likelihood. But yet, we reference that against the risk appetite statement. That misalignment would be something that we would then partner with within my department at Risk and Resilience, together with Business Controls and obviously the first line of defense, the business units, to take a deeper dive and understand what's going on there. Is it, you know, again, to some of the points raised earlier today, is it a resource constraint? Is there an underspending? Are we not taking on? You know, are controls not appropriately identified and the like? So this was just meant to provide a sample of how we intend to operationalize this risk appetite statement when it is ideally approved by the board today. So I will pause there and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, you you may have in terms of passing today.
Appreciate the updates. Adrian, Carly, if you could bump us back a couple of slides to the appetite material bar graph. Yeah, that one, I appreciate this. Well done, well designed, really nice picture. All I would ask is, obviously, we've got some mismatches today between our risk appetite and our maturity levels. So I'll assume that those, tell me otherwise. If those mismatches, that those mismatches aren't problematic or don't put us, create undue exposure or put us at undue risk. That said, I'd want to ensure that our ongoing monitoring of the progress where you're planning to make to close those gaps, eliminate those mismatches stays on track. So as we've chatted with each, you know, committee meeting, has come up with, you know, a scorecard or an enhanced version of this graph to ensure we stay on track and that we're giving you the support you need and that appropriate investments are made to close those gaps as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Chairman. Happy to provide that.
Yeah, thanks for capturing that and I hope organizationally, you know, people appreciate the priority that's needed to close what otherwise could be problematic exposures between the risk we think, you know, we're willing to take and in fact, the risk we are inheriting, given, you know, the level or sophistication of our controls. So yeah, it needs to be an organizational priority. This isn't Adrian's job, this is an organizational responsibility to deliver this. So thanks for the extra effort there. Other thoughts, comments?
We had a really good discussion at the Finance and Risk Committee meeting. So if there are no other comments, I'm going to ask, put this before the full board and ask for a motion of the risk appetite statement resolution.
If we could have a motion, please.
I'm moved.
Thanks, B. Second?
So moved.
All right, thanks, Dennis. Unless there's any other discussion, all in favor, supporting, you know, the risk appetite statement, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion? Thank you, Dennis. Any opposed? None? I didn't hear any motion carried.
Great. And so my last item, Mr. Chair, I just have one last item and that's a historical look back on hedging strategy. And I'll ask Brian Chan, Director of Market Analysis and Hedging, to give us an update on this item.
Thank you, trustee McKibben. So hi, everybody. Just want to thank everyone again, trustees, NIPA colleagues, everyone, the public again, for your time and opportunity to come back to close the loop on an open question from the last Finance and Risk Committee meeting regarding the look back at our hedging program in terms of what we've gained or given up. So let's start with a quick reminder on the goal of the hedging strategy, which follows the concepts of dollar-cost average strategy. Here in front of you, you have a conceptual graph summarizing the scenario of the market movements over an extended course of time. Now, each of these commodity cycles represents a time period in which the market has gone through a peak and a trough. And similar to the real commodities market, there's no predefined time in which, in which these occur. So now the blue line represents the average dollar per megawatt over the course of time. If our portfolio remain unhedged, the value, the valuation of the NIPA portfolio would just follow this curve. The up and down swings represent the market volatility, the price volatility of the market, the larger the swing, the larger the volatility. Now, without the ability knowing exactly when these movements occur, it presents a very large challenging, challenge from the budgeting perspective. So the goal here is to flatten that blue line to give a more stability and certainty in terms of the revenue stream to line it, to line them up against the NIPA expenses. And this is where the hedging program comes in. As represented by the red, the red line, ERM steps in to execute transactions at a fixed price to create this flatter line. So we look back, we can see that the difference between the hedge versus unhedged positions. Now, what we see here in a rising market, there will be missed opportunity as represented in the upside opportunity. And conversely, in the declining market, hedges will provide protection for downside risk. It'll mitigate but not fully eliminate all downside risk. Again, without the ability to time the market, it's important to stay the course once the strategy has been set to stabilize revenue and to minimize downside risk. So now let's convert the hypothetical to the actuals. Next slide, please. So we went back in time for, and took information from 2019 and 2021 to look at the program's impact. Before you is a chart with a very simplistic view of the hedging impact by comparing our year-end actuals, which is represented by the blue bars, as compared to the hypothetical scenario of the year-end actuals minus our hedge settlements, which is what we pay to receive on our hedges. Again, highlighted in the orange. The dotted bar above represents the annual targets. And below each year, you'll see the hedging percentages for the merchant portfolio. So now what you see here is in 2019 and 2020, the hedges, while a very low percentage, protected NIPA from lower revenue streams. It's about 15 and 50 million for each respective year. But last year in 2021, as the market was rebounding, we can see that we gave up an upside of about 30 million. So with all that said, I do want to point out two takeaways for the trustees, as was the chairman. In all years, the blue bar representing the actuals are closer to the targets, which have hedges in place, which and all this means is that it's confirming the efficiency of the program, which is the underlying principle, which is we want to reduce risk going into budget season. Now, point number two is that what you're also seeing here is the ups and downs of the market, as I highlighted in the prior slide. In 2019 and 2020, soft gas prices in a mild winter drove the market down. And then 2020, obviously, with the impacts of COVID on the world as well as the financial markets. Within these years, you'll see that hedges did provide some in-the-money settlements to help reduce or bring the targets, bring the merchant gross margin of closer to target. Now, in 2021, we'll see the market turn around and the gas prices rebound. And from a hedge settlement perspective, we gave up some opportunity here. As the first slide shows, if the rebound continues through 2022, there will be additional opportunity laws. However, if the market turns, our hedges will be, will give us the protection that we are looking for. So with the benefit of hindsight, we can see that the hedging program is performing as intended. We're mitigating the price exposure in some years at the expense of opportunity in other years. I would consider 2021 as the first full stable year of the new hedging strategy of a multi-year strategy. We've achieved our targets going 2022, as well as received our ERM C approval back in December for the 2022 plan going forward. While the overarching goal of the revenue stability has been confirmed with the strategy, what we want to continue doing here is reviewing data such as this, along with other market data, to look for areas of improvement to build upon the current hedging program and the current hedging strategy. One of the key updates to the 2022 strip plan that was approved is that we aligned our target dates with the, we align our target dates with the budget snapshot dates to provide additional stability going to budget setting. So just want to, we will continue to inform and work with the risk in ERM C with any changes or updates. I just want to thank everyone again and I'll open it up to any questions if there are any.
Any questions for Brian?
So averaging is working its way, that's, that's what it says.
Correct.
Yeah, my, my question, you know, was merely, it is, you know, what, what if any tweaks? You know, could, would or could we benefit from? So that's all I'm asking, Brian, is what are the lessons learned? And as the market dynamics continue to evolve, I just want to ensure we're applying lessons learned. Obviously, would prefer not to leave money on the table, but more than understand. We've, we, you know, place higher value on mitigating the downside risk than the reward of optimizing upside. So I'm not, I'm totally comfortable with that. I'm just making sure that we, with the benefit of look back and hindsight, make sure our look forward is as informed as possible and what if any tweaks, you know, should be made to the program.
Fully agree with you, Chairman. So I think one of the key things we're going to look at, which we started looking at last year as well, is, like you said, tweaking the percentages and what the goals are for each year in that multi-year strategy. What, what percentages do we want to hit, right? And then, you know, you know, run those scenarios through the tool and see what we have. And then we continue having those conversations with finance.
Okay, yeah, appreciate the analysis and just ask that you continue to, you know, look at it. So we have, have benefit of that on a real-time basis, so.
Mr. Chair, this does not require any votes, it was just.
Okay, super. Appreciate the follow-up there, Brian. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Tracy, you're complete?
That speaks, that's my report. Thank you.
All right, super. Thanks very much. Next, we have a handful of items that require approval in our consent agenda. Hopefully, everyone's had an opportunity to look at those. As always, if anyone has any questions, happy to entertain them now. Otherwise, I'll ask for a motion to adopt, adopt the consent agenda as presented.
So move.
So move. Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. Thanks, Dennis. Tracy, no questions? I'll assume all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Dennis is multitasking, he's on the move. He's in the, he's in the, he's in the mobile unit. We don't want to distract you. If you need emergency attention, we're right here, we're better than, whatever. I'm going to have to hit the blue GM button. We're here for you real time. All right, as I said upfront, final agenda item is a limited executive session. So unless there's any other matters to come before us, I'd ask for a motion to move to executive, executive session or pursuant to Section 105 of the Public Officers Law. Thank you, Tracy. B, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We will come back in public session merely for the purpose. in public session merely for the purpose of adjourning in public session rather than an executive session, but our agenda will be, is otherwise concluded at this point. So with that, we're now moving to exec session. Uh, thank you very much. If I can ask for a motion to resume the meeting in open session.
So moved.
Second.
Thanks, Dennis. Second. Thank you, Tracy. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. So we're now back in public session. As I stated before, we moved to exec session, our only purpose is to adjourn the meeting. Want to reiterate, no votes were taken during that brief executive session. Our next scheduled meeting of the Joint Boards of the Power Authority and Canals is March twenty-ninth. A short sixty days plus or minus away, as I said upfront, hopefully by then, we can be primarily back in person and look forward to the opportunity to engage then. So as always, thank you very much for your participation and I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Dennis. Second. Thank you, Tracy. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Have a great day, everyone. Stay healthy, stay safe, stay warm. Talk to you soon. Thank you.
Thank you.